Yeah, his car's here.
Yeah.
Yeah, his car's here.
You thought Matt was bored?
Yeah.
Spreadsheets.
I guess it is funny.
I said, what are you talking about? From Klee, from Klee.
So now I feel better that it's not just me that.
It's everybody.
Yeah.
It's not just you.
Yeah, I actually.
I should do it in the second one this side.
I'm gonna go ahead and get started if you guys are ready.
Yeah, that's right.
All right. Good evening. I'd like to call the regular board meeting of the Waterloo Community Schools Board of Education to order and ask that you join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, and will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Come on in, we'll wait.
Come on.
You are good.
No.
If you're talking.
Just go.
We're good.
We're fine. Perfect. Alrighty. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, and now Lyle Schmidt will read our mission statement.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thanks, Lyle. Before we get into the action items on our agenda this evening, I do want to make a note of just one change. Item I, which is board policy changes, we have a number of them for second reading this evening, but I will be removing number 508.1, which is the Wednesday night student activities. We had some discussion about this two weeks ago, and we need to take that back to our policy review committee, and so I'm gonna be removing that from our agenda this evening, but all the rest of those will stay on for the night, okay? All right, then the next item on our agenda is the public hearing for the 2019-20 budget certification. This is item A on your agenda. And at this time, I would declare the public hearing open and ask if there is anyone here this evening who wishes to address the board on the 2019-20-20 budget. Anyone? All right. It was published in the Courier, and it's in our board packet, so. All right, well, seeing no one, then I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Thanks, Sue, and a second?
Second.
Thanks, India or Jesse, either one? Does this need a roll call?
Not for the hearing.
Not for the hearing, okay. All right, then all those in favor of closing the public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, our hearing is closed. The next item on our agenda then is information from individuals and delegations, and I'm gonna ask if there's anyone here this evening who wishes to address the board on anything other than the budget that we just discussed. All right. Well, then, then, yeah, exactly, it's such a nice night out, so. All right, then, then we will move on to our consent agenda, which this evening consists of five items. The minutes of the March 25, 2019 special board meeting, and the March 25, 2019 regular board meeting, personnel appointments and adjustments, bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings, the IJAG Memorandum of Understanding, or MOU, and the Waterloo Career Center Change Order Number 12. Are there any items that board members wish to have removed from the consent agenda?
Item E, echo.
Item E. Anything else? Then could I entertain a motion to place items B, C, D, and F on the table, please?
So move.
Thank you, Sue, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jesse. All those in favor of approving those four consent agenda items, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to item E on page 16.
I move the Board of Education approve the IJAG Memorandum of Understanding with the East High School, with the East High School for students in grades nine to 12, and the IJAG Memorandum of Understanding with Carver Academy for students in seventh and eighth for the 2019-2020 school year at a cost of $67,500.
Thank you, Lyle, and a second?
Second.
And discussion.
Since here, we've had this a number of years. How many years have we had this program?
I'm not exactly sure how many. Do you know before I? So we have started, this has just expanded over time. We started with one program quite a number of years ago. I, it actually was when I was sitting in Stephanie's seat, so it's been a long time, I would say.
Fifteen?
Yeah, fifteen, okay, so it started with the junior-senior program at East. Then, in order to maintain consistency and get a better flow for students, we added a ninth and 10th grade program. And then, a few years ago, a couple of years ago, we added the seventh and eighth grade program last year, so, okay, so this is, this is the second year? This is the second year for that, so.
Okay, so on page 17, there's five primary performance goals. Ninety percent graduation GED rate, eighty percent overall success rate at the end of 12 months after graduation, sixty percent of graduates are employed, sixty percent of employed graduates are in full-time jobs leading careers, and eighty percent of graduates are full-time or combined work schools. So, I guess I don't see any results of any of the previous years, so I'm just wondering. You know, it seems like this request for 67,000 ought to be accompanied by.
Yeah.
By the perform, by how this program has done in the past.
I don't know, Steph, if you want to take that one, or if you want me to take it? I can share some of the stuff from last year.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, and then you can chime in, or. I do know that we meet with Lori Phalen from the IJAG program every single year, and we do discuss all the results, so I absolutely can share with you. I'm not gonna be able to quote them right now, but, for example, the graduation rate of the students who are in the program, we have exceeded 95% every year since we've been there. As a matter of fact, one time, they're usually, we usually run about 50 kids, maybe 45 to 50 kids in the junior-senior program, so if you divide that out, that's gonna be about 25 juniors, 25 seniors. And so of that one year, out of the 25 seniors, give or take a couple, we had 100% graduation rate of those kids who were in, oh my gosh, of kids who were in that program. So, we have all of this, it, IJAG probably has some of the most rigorous data collection. Matter of fact, I've heard some of the teachers who teach for IJAG comment about how much data there is on that, and I could absolutely send that to you, but I can assure you that they are meeting their goals. There have been a couple of times where the career placement, you know, the employment might have been like 62% or not, you know, I mean, it was really close, but it, they're, they're doing a good job with that, which is why we voted to extend it to the other programs.
So they keep track of the data?
They do, but they bring it, and we go over it every single year, and then we match it up. There was one time, you know, we have actually the raw data that we go over with them, so we, we trust it, verify.
This is after graduation data we wouldn't necessarily have, inherently have.
Uh, it, we would have the majority of it, we have the graduation, we have the, that they, and really what they're looking for is a plan for graduation, that they actually secure a job. Now whether they, you know, I don't necessarily know where they are 12 months from then, but we, we do, we do have that.
IJAG does try to keep track of that?
Yeah, they do.
Can I, can I just add my experience with IJAG? I, I agree that maybe IJAG can be enhanced in some, some ways, however, what I also know that is this program works with a lot of low-income first-generation students who are educationally disadvantaged, and not having it versus, you know, maybe working to improve it, I think would be very prohibitive for our school district. And so, you know, I agree with you, I think it's important for us to be data-informed, Lyle, but I, I just do also want to say positive things about what IJAG does. You know, for example, we get a lot of criticisms about, you know, students not knowing how to add and subtract time, or how to, to make change, or things like that, or, and, and although we have a lot of career readiness in our schools currently, this program is, is what we call intrusive advising, if you will, and some of our students need a little bit more intrusive advising versus some of those who do not. So I think this is a really good program, I'm super excited that the, the funding will be here to extend it, but I, I do think that maybe we can look at what, what are some things we can do to enhance it.
Now, unless I criticize the program.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, no, I wasn't saying that you were criticizing it.
I didn't have the performance.
I was, I was agreeing with, with you, that, you know, maybe we can look at some things to enhance it, because, you know, over the, over the years, things change, so maybe we need to look at.
So is it size, is it size limited?
It is, it is. In the junior-senior program, they can have no more than, it's 50. The sophomore junior, I, 48 or something, and then I, Stephanie, do you know what it is for the seventh and eighth grade? It's 45 maybe, or what, do you remember?
I believe 45, sounds correct.
Yeah, I think you're right.
And that's not in one class?
No.
No, right.
No.
But, so my question would be, as far as what they're doing in the middle school versus the high school, is that curriculum, I mean, is it based, you know, like it builds on each other, or is, and then also the attendance aspect of it, is it attendance for school in general, or attendance for the IJAG classes?
Uh, it's attendance overall, it's overall attendance. And I don't know about the, the, I, I do know that they do build each, because they have certain.
The curriculum is given to them, and it is aligned with the high school, and I do know, because I was at Carver last year with the first year of implementation, and I know that my teacher met with the teachers at East High regularly to make sure that what they were doing was in alignment, they met regularly. Mm-hmm.
Perfect, thank you.
I will also say, someone who actually worked for IJAG, that we, I just have loved the commitment that the teacher does have with the student after they graduate. I can honestly say, I still see former students now, and they're doing great in their lives, or we still have a great relationship, so that relationship that is built with this one teacher is pretty amazing, because they are still following them a year after, if not longer. So I think that commitment level is amazing, that, you know, you have this one-on-one with this one teacher, when, you know, one teacher at East or West or whatever may not have that same relationship with the student, so on that level, I do love the program, so, yeah.
And what if the student kind of is in the program but sort of falls off track?
And that does, does happen, um, I will say they, they do their best as far as trying to contact the families, not just the student, but there's involvement with the families too, so they still try to commit, trying to find the student and keep them settled, so, yeah, it's, it's hard, it's, it's a huge challenge for any teacher, but they do try their best to keep them, yeah.
So the, the total for all six grades is 50, or?
No, 50 for the junior-senior program, 50 kids, 45 to 50 kids for the sophomore, freshman, sophomore, and then another 45 kids at the, yeah, so there's about 150, I mean, give or take 150 kids, and if they don't have a completely full roster, they might have 48 kids or something like that, but they have to, they have to maintain a full roster, I mean, their, their teachers do. The other thing that I think is really important to note is that, do you see the total cost that we pay for this? $67,000 for three separate programs, three full-time teachers. That's just our share, and so all of the people that, all of the organizations that donate to this, they do a lot of fundraising on the backside, that doesn't even come close to covering the cost, this is, yeah, so, the, we pay 20, 20, I think, 20,000 or 22,000 for each teacher, so toward their, toward their, their salary. So there are a lot of people that are supporting this program, and I think that's a, I mean, we are very grateful. I was trying to look to see if I could name some of the other organizations, but there are a lot of people that support it.
Well, and I wondered that if it was just one teacher for the 67,000.
No, it's three teachers, three, we only pay a portion of it, just a small portion of it.
Thank you.
So, is it, generally speaking, do the same students participate?
It, it is.
All years?
That's why we tried to back map it, and that's why the program was at Carver, because the majority of the feeders were coming in, so it really was designed that students would get six years of that. It does change back and forth, there is a little bit of fluidity, but that was the, that was the idea, that we would get it, and I can tell you, just so you want to, if you want to know, my worry was that by the time we get them to juniors and seniors, when we could tout a 100% graduation rate, my worry was that some of the kids that would have benefited, we had already lost. So that's why we brought it down to the freshman sophomore, so we could snag them earlier and then track them all the way through, and then the concept was, well, what about middle school? And so that's what, that's why we did that, really trying to catch kids earlier so that we were keeping them through.
And that's consistent. There's a school of thought that says most students actually drop out between eighth and ninth grade, I mean, mentally drop out.
Jenny, if there would be a West High student that would be identified for this program, is that more a Hoover or a Central, or?
Yeah. We have not yet done that, because we've, we've had our rosters full, but I will tell you, we have had a lot of conversations about how fast to grow the program. We've grown, we've grown from one teacher to three, to, you know, three programs in a short amount of time, and because we're not the only funders for it, they, they, they back it up with other donations, and so I have had conversations, they have said that they would be, and I, Mr. Mehe is here from West High, but we have had the dialogue about whether we would try to extend it and do the very same thing, go west, and then, you know, junior-senior program, and then back map it to a freshman sophomore. We haven't chose, chosen to actually do that yet, but we, we are talking about it.
But that would be a different program, you could establish a different program at West, which.
It would still, it's just the number of programs, it's just another IJAG teacher with another, yep, a junior-senior program at West High with another, a fourth teacher. But we're not doing that, but we've, we've talked about, you know.
But so currently, let's say there's an identified student at West that really could benefit from the program, do we allow them to partake in the program?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
It originally started that way. When I, when I taught, I did have East and West students at the very beginning. Yep, and so, yeah, absolutely.
I'm glad she's here, she's got the historical.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further down there, you guys? Alrighty. Then all those in favor of approving the IJAG MOU, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That concludes our consent agenda this evening, so that takes us to item G, then on page 37, and this is the technology purchase, and we have some folks from our IT department here this evening, but I'm gonna get this really wordy.
You're welcome.
I know, Matt, you love to make it, all right, so here we go. So the Board of Education approved the purchase of 33 laptops, 128 desktops, and 3,000 Chromebooks from Dell at a total of $1,3,033.68, and 33 Chromeboxes, 3,000 cases, 20 active panels, and four mobile stands from CDWG at a total cost of $245,662.50.
So move.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
All right, awesome, and with that, I will turn it over to Matt O'Brien, who is our chief infoman.
Wow, illustrious title.
Good evening.
So much, good evening. Just for clarification, it's 330 Chromeboxes.
Oh, what did I say, 3,000?
I think you said 33 maybe, so just wanted to record to show that.
330 Chromeboxes, pardon me, I didn't notice it either, but I was trying to get them all.
You know, you did, it was a mouthful, so you did great with the rest of it, so bravo for that. So I'll give a little bit of kind of nuts and bolts information on what's before you tonight, and then, if you don't mind, we'll play a short video that we prepared for you for the instructional side, and then of course, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have as well. So, as the board is aware, we have a lifecycle replacement process for all of our technology, this is something that we've been doing consistently for a while, and for those board members that have been with us for a while, you're probably used to me coming in the spring with a rather large technology purchase. We always buy that in the spring, so that then we have the summer to phase in the technology purchase for our staff and students. This year, there are several parts to the package, and it seems like some big numbers. Previously, we kind of had broken these up into a couple of different nights, and we just kind of have one large package for you to vote on this year, which is why the numbers look a little bit larger than they potentially have in the past. Last year, it was broken into a couple nights, and, and tonight, it's all one big package before you, so I'll kind of break that down. So, in the, the package, the proposal before you, we actually have new teacher laptops for six of our schools. We also have new staff computers for various administrative and support staff, kind of all throughout the district, pretty much every building has at least something that's, that's kind of due for replacement there. We also have student computers at Becker Elementary that are past due for replacement, and then we're replacing a small chunk of the student computers at Orange as well, so that's kind of the elementary student portion of it. Three years ago, the board approved a different model for technology distribution, at that time, it was for sixth graders, where each sixth grader at the time was loaned a Chromebook, a district Chromebook, to be used instructionally. That model has now, within the last three years, expanded through sixth through ninth grade, so the proposal in front of you tonight will actually take that sixth through 12th grade, and we kind of gave a heads-up last year when we brought that before you, that that was kind of the proposed intention, but obviously would be subject to board approval when the technology refresh came before you, and that's what's before you tonight. So, the Chromebooks for our middle and high school that are before you would actually be issued to incoming sixth graders, 11th graders, and 12th graders, as those would be the grades that would need Chromebooks issued to those students, the other grades, the students would, the Chromebooks would be following the students, so sixth, 11th, and 12th incoming, so it's three grades worth that is part of the proposal. So of those 3,000 Chromebooks that's before you, and this is all broken down in, in the board packet, but a good chunk of those are for our middle and high school for those grades, but then we also have a portion of those going to part of the elementary purchase for Becker and for Orange as well, so again, that's broken down in the, the attachment to the board document.
So next, next year, where do the 12th grade Chromebooks go?
Well, this is, so this year, right now, we are only one-to-one, sixth through ninth grade, so 11th and 12th graders are getting those new. What we will do next year is similar to what we will do with the technology that will be removed from the high schools, that won't be needed any longer because of the one-to-one. We basically like to keep the same model consistent within the building, or consistent within the grade level, so it's really helpful to have extra Chromebooks that we can use to either issue as spares, when those need to be retired, parts, that type of thing as well. We may also, just because we'll have a decent number of those coming back next year, I believe that's your question, right, is the following year, if we approve this, and what happens the following year, since they'd just be one-year-old? Yeah, so we would look at using a portion of those that were going to our spare pool, each of our schools has a pool of spare Chromebooks that are issued if a student forgot the Chromebook, or for loaners while theirs are in for repair, that type of thing, so a portion would kind of replenish the spare pool, and then the rest will probably look at trickling into our elementaries or, or other areas. Did that?
Why wouldn't we just recycle those into sixth grade in the following year?
Um, we potentially could, um, the, thinking long-term, what I'm looking at is if this program continues, we'd eventually like to get it down to a, basically a cycle where we're buying two grade levels a year. So that's something we can potentially look at, but I'm also trying, we'll be mapping it out long-term, because ultimately, we would like to replace new Chromebooks coming in at sixth grade, so then those last at least the entire middle school career before they would be due for replacement again. As we've been phasing this in, this year, we're actually buying three grades worth, but eventually, we would like to buy two grades worth, so that may be something that we would look at, but I also am cognizant that we want to make sure that we have enough spares to use, and a whole grade levels worth kind of complicates that, knowing that we want the model to last an entire year. It, it's also nice to issue a new Chromebook to the students coming in, one of the big things that we've really been trying to work on is having students take ownership of it, so it helps to issue them something new, so that if there was any damage, we know that it, it was attributed to that particular student.
Well, I think what I hear you saying is the life is only three years.
The life of a Chromebook, we've been planning on three to four years. So, sixth through 12th grade, the goal is basically to replace those twice with a split at one point at three years and one point at four years.
And that's because they're damaged, because they don't have the capacity?
Um, it's both, the reality is, is, I guess I would answer that, that's twofold. The first is, it's, technology is becoming almost disposable, I mean, if you look at the equipment that we buy these for, for basically just over $200, compared to the money that we used to spend on laptops, which was well over $1,000. Obviously, technology's come down in price, but there is the motto, they don't make it like they used to. We've actually been very deliberate when we've been looking at what models that will allow, and trying to find ones that we believe are built to last, but the reality is, is wear and tear on a mobile device, such as a Chromebook or even a laptop, is not the same as a desktop, just because of the nature of you're, you're moving it around quite a bit, and that takes, that takes a toll on the life. So it's kind of both a combination of just the useful lifecycle bef, while it's in a usable condition, but then also just the obsolete factor as well, that, you know, four years out of a device nowadays, with as quickly as technology is evolving, is, is pretty decent, particularly for a mobile device. I mean, when you think about it, a lot of people replace their cellphones in two years, so this is certainly, you know, a longer lifespan than a lot of mobile devices that I think folks are used to. So, just to kind of zoom back out quickly into the proposal before you, the Chromebooks is a, a major portion of that, again, this would bring one-to-one Chromebooks for sixth through 12th grade. The final piece of the proposal before you is a small purchase of Promethean Active Panels, 20 of them, a good chunk of those are gonna be used at the WCC, and then the remaining ones will be used either at Lowell or our middle schools. We, as a board may remember, approved the purchase of phasing in some replacements of our active boards at the sixth grade level at middle school, so we're looking to slowly continue to do that, so that we have spare parts, basically, to keep the rest of the district's active boards alive, so that's kind of the final piece of that. I did want to mention that all of these purchases are, as I kind of mentioned earlier, part of our annual process, it's part of our planned budget, so this is not necessarily a surprise, this is something that budget-wise, we do plan for, and the active boards, the portion of those that are going into WCC are part of that construction project, is part of the safe funds that are allocated to the Waterloo Career Center's final opening there. So, I guess the final piece that I just wanted to emphasize, and I think you all have probably heard me say this before, that while this is a technology purchase, we really don't like seeing this as a technology initiative, you know, we always want the focus to be on instruction. This is just a, a tool, it's a very valuable tool, it's a tool, quite honestly, that we've had around for quite some time. Student computers are nothing new, we've obviously had those for decades. The Chromebook at the secondary level is, is just a new, more efficient model to get a valuable tool in the hands of students, but we always want our focus to be on grade instruction. So, with that in mind, Ron Moreland, our instructional technology coordinator, actually prepared a little video, just a short video, kind of highlights some of the instructional use of Chromebooks, really all technology, but specifically Chromebooks, so we'll play that for you, and then if you have other questions, either Ron or myself can certainly answer them.
Thanks, Matt.
You bet.
Welcome to the Waterloo Community Schools Chromebook Expansion Project. You may remember last year, we talked about the United States Partnership for the 21st Century Skills, declaring the need for the four Cs in education to help prepare our students for the future. They are critical thinking, communication, collaboration, and creativity. You may also remember how we saw Carver students create a student life website for student announcements, totally built on Google tools, or how music students explored rhythm and composition using Google Sound Lab. composition using Google Sound Lab, or do you remember how Hoover had students log their independent reading using Google Sheets and then graph their fiction and nonfiction reading patterns? You may remember how teachers are also leveraging Google Classroom and even the built-in collaboration features to give each other real-time, in-contact feedback, or do you remember how Bunker students read the refugee book, did research on various refugee groups, created presentations and delivered them to their teachers and peers, and then even invited the author of the book to come visit? This year, we assembled a tech cadre, a group of tech-embracing teachers that would roll out some professional development to their peers. As a group, we introduced this SAMR model, a way to reflect on technology integration efforts when lesson planning. Is the technology I'm planning to use with students a direct substitute for something the students have done in the past without the technology? Or has the technology added some functional improvement to augment the task? Maybe the technology has transformed the instruction to the point of modification, significant task redesign, or maybe the technology opens the doors for creation or tasks previously inconceivable, redefinition. It's important to know that the goal isn't always redefinition. The goal is to use technology appropriately for any given educational task, and for the teachers to reflect on ways they can offer our students a variety of experiences. This SAMR pool model reminds us that there is fun and growth in learning to be had at all ends of the pool. Let's look at how West High's science teacher took some material she already used and reflected on how technology could enhance it. Using a service called NearPod, she now can create interactions and check for understanding moments right within the presentation. Students can take a quiz, a graph, annotate, and add text or a label, and even add pictures from the internet. Students then submit their responses, and the teacher can immediately see if there is a need to review or move on. Or how about students using an app called Plotagon to practice writing dialogue or even write their own play? But now, they can see their story come to life with characters that acted out for them. Students can literally set the stage, choose their characters, assign gestures and facial expressions, and of course, write the dialogue. Or this high school teacher thought about her Greek mythology unit and decided there had to be a better way. Using the Chromebooks, she leverages a virtual escape room where students learn about the characters by picking up clues needed to open doors for more clues. She gamified the learning using technology, and I bet the students picked up a thing or two, don't you? Or why not combine a music project with your science concept of circuits to create a virtual piano using a Chromebook, makey makey circuitry, and bananas as your keys? Lou Henry did. I mean, come on, that's cool. Dry erase boards and markers next to notebooks and pencils next to Chromebooks, this is the picture of leveraging a variety of tools to engage our students that we want everyone to see. In the Waterloo Schools, we believe that Chromebooks are a tool that teachers and students can use in powerful ways. And another West High teacher showed me how to use a service called Render Forest to create cool animations, so let me know if you want a copy to show your friends.
Thank you, Waterloo Schools!
Ron had to throw an Easter egg in there for the...
Couldn't help myself.
Yeah. We would be happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
I had a quick question as far as the percentage of number of computers that are damaged throughout the year. Just curious, what does that number look like?
Yeah, so, I should, I'm normally precise, I should have brought with me the exact numbers that I actually polled them a couple of weeks ago. I think our average damage rate across middle and high school was, at this point in the year, somewhere in the mid-teens. What we had heard from other one-to-one districts was to expect somewhere between a 20% to 25% damage rate, so if you kind of look at us, you know, with two months left being somewhere in the teens, obviously, there's still a little bit to go, and some damage isn't identified until the end of the year, I think we're right on track. I'll tell you that it is predictably higher at the middle school. It, it does actually go down by, by the time the, the students progress. Our high school, we only have ninth grade right now at both East and West, it was actually percentage-wise in the single digits, where the middle schools was a little bit higher, but the average out was, like I said, mid-teens, which is right around where we would expect it to be.
And by damage, is this a hundred-dollar fix, or is this a throw-the-unit-away?
Most are not throw-the-unit-away. Most are screens, like a cracked LCD, which we only charge the actual rate for the part or the average cost for the parts, we don't charge labor or anything like that. So, you know, an LCD screen is, I want to say like somewhere, you know, the $30, $40 range, keyboards, you know, $20, $30 range, that type of thing. We certainly have had some whole unit loss, that's not deniable, but that's certainly not the, the most typical. The most typical is, is cracked LCDs, either the student, you know, didn't treat it well, closed, slammed it shut with a pen in it or a pencil in it, which shatters the LCD, that type of thing. That's, that's most common if, if we were to identify one thing that we're having issues with.
What percentage are you using the insurance program on it, roughly? Do you know?
Um, I'm regretting that. I, I can send, actually, if you're interested, I'll include all of that in, in one of Dr. Lindemann's weekly update. I should have had those numbers in front of me, I, I did poll them. I want to say we were somewhere in the 20, like a quarter of our students, some, somewhere around that in average. And, and just for everyone's perspective, what Mr. Knight referred to was an optional program where parents can pay $25, and then the cost of repairs is basically subsidized. It's kind of, it's like insurance, but we can't call it insurance, we call it a cooperative loss program.
So, so take me through a scenario, if a student totally trashed a Chromebook, what would, what happens?
So, if, assuming that, you know, we've had a, a few cases where it wasn't necessarily the student that was issued the Chromebook, it wasn't them that was liable, another student, you know, it was very easy to see that it was another student liable, so obviously, in that case, then it's, it's a different discussion. But assuming that the, it happened while in the care of the student that it was issued to, if the Chromebook is either completely missing or completely destroyed, then they would be assessed in their fees, the, the cost of the Chromebook. That is part of the Chromebook agreement that the parents sign when they're issued a, a take-home Chromebook. We've done that as an additional kind of supplemental paper form the last several years as we were moving technology forward and moving towards online registration. That will actually be part of the electronic registration process moving forward, so that will hopefully be streamlined a bit.
So, then, again, to percentages, what percentage do we actually recoup from broken or irreparable Chromebooks? What, what do we actually get back?
So, it, it go, I, I don't know the number off the top of my head. I will tell you that it's nowhere near 100%, but it also stays, it's levied against the students' fees, which is, you know, part of their recurring process as far as them progressing through the Waterloo Schools. So, I would wager to say that as they, as they're kind of moving through the system, I think that as there's some consequences to not having fees current at the high school level, that we'll probably see more collection take place as that takes place, but right now, it's, it's certainly no, nowhere near 100%, but it's always levied against the student unless an administrator deems that there are special circumstances. We give all of our administrators the ability to waive fees at, at their discretion if there was a, a special circumstance, such as we had a student who had a fire at the house, of course, we're, we're just going to eat that cost and, and not, you know, levy that, that particular fee against that student as an example.
And then I had a question about the staff computers?
Yeah.
So, you said it was 330 new staff computers?
Uh, I think it was just over 300, the 330 was the, oh yeah, it was actually 330 for, for both. Yeah, that was our laptop number as well as our Chromebox number, yep.
So, then, let's say, do, does that specifically go to then, let's say, Orange gets all new computers?
Yeah, so, what we do is we try to bunch all of our teachers at a building together. I also mentioned that there's some random support staff or administrative staff. We sometimes do those on a different cycle, which is why we have a smattering of kind of those included in the proposal, but we try to group all the teachers together. So, yes, in, in that example, Orange actually got, their teachers got new laptops last year, but five of our other elementaries are, plus Alcoron is the sixth building, are due for new laptops this year. So, all of the teaching staff in that building will be turning in their old laptop, which is five years old, and will be issued a new laptop from this pool.
So, like a new teacher, first-year, second-year teachers on a building rotation that gets a new computer, what happens in that scenario?
Yeah, so, it depends on the, the building that they've been assigned to. So, we try to keep teaching staff consistent within the building. So, at the end of the year, like, let's just take one of our high schools, for example, their laptops will be two years old now. The teacher that's leaving turns in that laptop, we then have a pool of laptops, we shuffle between buildings as necessary, and then we, we wipe them, obviously, we prepare them then for the next staff member, and then those are ready. We usually issue those to our new teachers at the New Teacher Institute that they attend in August.
Got it. And then, last question for me, what do you do with the old, like, teach, staff computers? As far as, I'm a recycling hound, and so what do you do with that?
Yeah, well, we, we don't, very, nothing hits the landfill, and quite honestly, I think we, more than most districts, use equipment until it's really dead, and I've said that to the board before, you know, we've kind of talked about, we want to buy this of this particular, to replace this model of equipment at these buildings, whether it's Promethean boards, or whether it's computers, or whether it's Chromebooks, so that then we have that same model that we can use to keep the rest of the district's fleet of that same model alive. So, we use like five-year-old computers either for special purposes. A, a great example is the Chromebooks that the, the board took your little ISAS workshop on. Those were once a computer lab, I, I'm not positive off the top of my head where that came from, but that came from an elementary somewhere where then, or middle school where those then got replaced. Then, we've used those four-year-old devices then as either special purposes or parts machines, that type of thing. Ultimately, when there's no value left in it, like I said, we typically use it until there's very little resale value left in it, then we have different recycling companies that will pick them up and actually break them down for their parts and recycle them for us.
Thank you.
Yep.
I do have two questions real quick.
Okay.
First question, what's the, for a student's first touch of a Chromebook, is what grade?
So, it, it depends, that's actually a really good question. It depends a little bit on the school, but generally, our, our elementary model is between second to third grade is when we've transitioned two students using Chromebooks. The K, PK, K1, sometimes into the second grade is where they're using more either tablets like iPads or desktop computers, and then by second grade, that's when we start transitioning some, some buildings as more third grade into Chromebooks. So, somewhere between second and third grade, per board policy, students start getting issued accounts, at wlu.org accounts, which is what they use for email and to access Chromebooks and everything else at the second grade level. So, it's available to use at the second grade, but again, a little bit depending on the elementary, it may not be in use till third.
And so, you kind of touched on my second question in regards to iPads, so are we still purchasing and completely using iPads still in the classroom?
Yeah, so iPads kind of have, I think, their place either in the very early grade levels or some special circumstances at the secondary grade levels, like for an art classroom or, you know, some special circumstances. Otherwise, we've really identified, and I think this is consistent with most other districts, that a Chromebook for most grade levels is a much better machine because it can be used for both content retrieval as well as content creation, you know, actually as a keyboard, so it can be used for literacy, for writing. That's still, even with an iPad, if you purchased a keyboard with it, that's really clunky, so it's not really the, the device for that. For the primary grade levels, it still makes sense, and yes, we still do purchase iPads. This year is a little bit of a misnomer because normally, there is some iPads included in the proposal. This year, like I said, we're just, we're concentrating more on secondary, so we only really have one elementary and then a small chunk of another elementary, and at Becker, we're using more of the desktop computers for the early grade levels. They do have some iPads already that they've gotten through some grants and some other pieces that they'll kind of supplement that with.
Thank you.
You bet.
Do you do the repairs internally, or do you send them out?
We do, with the exception of iPads, we do all of the repairs internally, and that's actually a, a pretty cool thing. We have a number of student interns that we've worked with the WCC on getting, this year, we have four interns, two of them will be unfortunately leaving us because they've been fantastic, but they're graduating seniors. Have another two which will carry over, we're recruiting for the next year. So, we look at the WCC programs and try to work with students to give them real-world experience. It's a huge win-win. I think the students that have worked with us would have positive things to say about just both the experience as well as some of the cool things that they've been able to do. Sometimes, it's a little monotonous, so to repair a Chromebook all day, you know, can be monotonous to do 30 in a row type of thing, so we try to mix that up and have maybe three days a week where they're working on Chromebook repair as far as parts, and, you know, another couple days where we have them working alongside our techs doing other projects. But, the student workers have allowed us to supplement our professional technical staff and, and perform all those Chromebooks and how, repairs in-house pretty cost-effectively, which is why it's a win-win, because obviously, a, a student worker is, is cheaper than a professional staff member, so we're, we're getting some, some good labor that we need in help of repair, and the students are getting some, some really good experience.
How, how many staff members do you have for repair?
So, we, it's a, it's not a straightforward answer because I have several techs that have kind of a dual role, so for example, I have one technician who, if you broke down their FTE, it might be .4 as a tech and, and .6 as a help desk person, you know, so that type of thing. So, we actually have seven techs, but not all of them, they're, they're all full-time, but their job doesn't necessarily consist full-time of actual tech work. Some of them share some other things like either help desk or software support.
So, how many calls, how many help desk calls do you get in a week?
Uh, well, so, we actually operate both a call center as well as a ticketing system, electronic ticketing system where staff with their credentials can go and log a ticket, and I will tell you that the vast majority of our staff actually do a really good job of knowing when to call versus when it just makes sense to log a ticket, because if they log a ticket, it automatically gets routed instantly to the right person based off of their category and whatnot. So, our call volume isn't extreme because a lot of our, our support issues wind up at, start as a ticket as opposed to a phone call. A, a lot of our phone calls are longer, like we're, either it's an emergency, so we're remoting in and trying to troubleshoot over the phone, or a, a lot of our phone calls are like our building support staff where they have an infinite campus registration question, or grade, teacher has a grading question, those type of things. So, it's very cyclical, which is why we've actually moved to this kind of hybrid model where we have a couple of people that, their primary portion of their job is help desk and a couple of other folks that a, a large portion of their job might be away from help desk, but they also have help desk as a portion of their job. The beginning of the year, we get hundreds of calls in a week, you know, this time of the year, if it's not during grading period, you know, depending on the day, a couple dozen calls in the day, it just really depends on, on the day type of thing. So, that, that kind of flexibility and staffing has really benefited us and, and making sure that we have folks able to answer the phones and also don't have them just sitting idly either.
So, do all our Chromebooks have the same operating system, or do you have to occasionally upgrade?
So, that's actually a, a big win for Chromebooks, is I talk a lot about total cost of ownership. So, the total cost of ownership, we look at not just the initial purchase cost, but how much in other costs does it actually take to, for us to own that device? And a Chromebook- And a Chromebook has a big win because we don't have to buy additional software, like antivirus software, for example. We don't have to buy what are called Windows licensing CALs for server connections, or several other pieces. And we don't have to worry about the operating system because the operating system automatically updates. So, Chrome OS is on version like seventy-four, seventy-five, something like that. Google basically guarantees that they'll support a device for a minimum of four years, but they really, in reality, have been going more five to six years, where they say for this model of device, we're going to continue to issue our newest operating system for this time period. So, the devices automatically update. The only software costs we really have outside of any cloud-based subscriptions are just for that. You'll see denoted in the board documents, this Chromebook licensing, which is twenty-five, twenty-six dollars. That's basically so we can manage the Chromebooks and push out settings and things of that nature. Outside of that, we don't really have any other software costs.
Thank you. And just one last question.
Sure.
With this enhancement, technological enhancement, how close are we percentage-wise to being a district of one-on-one?
Well, we will be one-to-one secondary with this.
Six through twelve.
Six through twelve, yes, we'll be one-to-one with this. Elementary, we are with this. Becker was one of our last schools to get kind of refreshed when newer technology was available that allowed us to put more devices out there. We have a few left that will probably be part of next year's package. But we are, I would say, close, at least one to two, if not very close to one-to-one at our upper elementary. So, secondary, six through twelve, we will be one-to-one if you approve this. Upper elementary will be a minimum of one to two, in some cases, close to one-to-one. And then, really, that's not something we're looking at for the primary grades. It's, you know, a different model they use in more in like centers, that type of thing. So, that's not, at least for now, a direction that we're looking at for the earlier elementary grades.
Awesome, thank you.
You bet.
Good news.
Anything further for Matt? Thanks, Matt. As usual, we've exhausted our questions. Only took us half an hour to get there, but they were all good.
Nice video run.
Yeah, nice video run. Thanks for the plug, that was awesome, so. All right, if there's nothing further, then I would entertain a motion to accept the technology purchase. Thank you, and a second. We already have it on the table, actually, so all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to item H.
Before you go to the next one, I have some information on the IJAG. It looks like we first adopted it in two thousand five, six school year, and Ms. India Johnson was our education specialist at that time.
I think you're right.
Two thousand five, wow.
Good lord.
Taking it way back.
Long time ago.
All right, so the next item on our agenda then is item H. This is the two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-one WEA contract agreement, and the recommended motion is the Board of Education approve the proposed agreement with the Waterloo Education Association, WEA, for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year and the twenty twenty, twenty-one school year. Can I get that motion on the table? Thank you. Did India, did you say so moved?
I did, yeah, so moved.
All right, in a second.
Second.
Thank you, Sue, and discussion. I'm, Kingsley, I know you would like to say a couple of words, but we've got some of our negotiations team out there, we've got some WEA members out there, so have at it.
Thank you. Just to be brief, ultimately, I just want to thank, it's just a pleasure to work with WEA this year, this being my first year with the district. And I just want to kind of name just the members of their team, and you know, Rebecca, if I'm getting anybody wrong, please just run up here and say you're wrong and tell me the name I'm missing.
Come to the mic.
Yeah, please come to the mic, please come to the mic. We have Matt Beish as the chief negotiator, really appreciated working with him. Rebecca Mohorn, obviously, as the WEA president. We had Connie Adams there, Tracy Richmond, and then Naomi Feldman-Cross. Just again, a pleasure to work with all of them throughout this entire process. I think at the end, break a little bit of bread or pizza in regards to kind of finalizing the agreement, and that was just kind of a wonderful end to the negotiation process. And then I was, obviously, want to thank our principals in the audience. You had Annie Mehe from West High School, and then Amy Schmidt from Hoover Middle School, as well as Audrey Welkin-Green, she's not here right now, at Kitcher Elementary. Also, Michael, Dr. Mohorn, and our human resources specialist, Mickey, was there as well. And I don't want to say anything without forgetting Brett, our actual attorney that helps us through the negotiation process. Again, just an overall good process. Again, thank you to the principals. There's still some things that, I know that multiple, many of them mentioned throughout the process that we're still looking into, absent negotiations. Just a really good collective conversation to discuss. Not only, obviously, the issues that come with trying to negotiate salaries for the upcoming school years, but also having a conversation about what's the best way to addressing different types of situations that come up in negotiation process, that don't necessarily remain to negotiations, just in general, having the opportunity to talk to both very busy principals, all three busy principals during that timeframe. So, I don't want them to stand up for the camera or anything, but just a kudos to them, and obviously, again, kudos to all the WEA representation.
Why don't you stand up for just two minutes so that we can say thank you, because you've sat here for an hour, so we would like to just say thank you. I'm just going to clap, I'm just telling you, because I appreciate it. So, thank you all. Becky, stand up, Becky, come on now. Thank you guys, very much.
Clean a picture.
Woo, get up, Tara, Tara.
I haven't need that picture yet.
Kingsley, I don't want to cut you off, but I just want to say, you know, it's a big deal to get through negotiations, to have all of it done, and to have a two-year contract, and so, and it was a lot of work, and they meet multiple times, so you should be thanked, and we really appreciate it. So, I don't know if anybody else has anything for Dr. Bajway or the team?
So, is that adding thirty minutes on Thursdays across the year? How's that work here, understanding that part of it?
That's correct. Yes, so for the upcoming year, we'll have additional thirty minutes on Thursday, and then that's on top of the three-point-one base of four hundred that we're looking at as well. To answer your question?
Yeah, I just kind of, I want to make sure I understood what it was.
I can walk through just briefly. And so, you're looking for a step movement for all eligible employees, and four hundred dollars on the base, which is that three-point-one, and then an additional four hundred and thirty dollars on the base, which is the additional one-point-two, together being four-point-three-one, which would be the entire amount of the increase for this upcoming school year. So, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And then as you move into the next school year, you're looking at three hundred and seventy-five dollars on the base, which is two-point-eight-six percent. And that's for the twenty twenty, twenty-one school year.
And there's no change in hours that second year?
That's correct.
Right, okay.
My only last request, if there's no other questions, is that picture that Tara took, I would just like to use in future negotiations processes.
You guys sign a waiver before you leave, but, yeah. We won't photo credit.
But I guess the real positive of this, though, is the two-year, as you reiterated numerous times, the amount of time and energy of both sides and everyone, and now we don't have to do this again for two years rather than one year. So, I think that's a real win-win, so that, that people may question why we do that, but I think it's a good thing to eliminate a lot of stress each year, you know?
Yeah, absolutely. Not to say that we don't love, you know, meeting with Rebecca Mohorn and all the other WEA presentation, but ultimately, it saves not only, you know, us time from an administrative standpoint, but then their time as well. And, you know, again, appreciate everything that they put forth, because it did take a lot, and they just, you know, everybody did a wonderful job as far as walking through this process.
And they're not the only bargaining unit that we have multiple year contracts with, and so, that's a good thing as well, so. All right, anything further? Again, thanks, team, we appreciate you very much. Thanks for being here tonight. All right, then all those in favor of approving the twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-one WEA contract agreement, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those, oh, sorry, Sue, and those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. The next item on our agenda then is item I. These are board policy changes. And as I said earlier, we're just removing the one from taking that back for, taking that back to our policy review committee. So, the recommended motion is that the board approve the following policies: recognition of bargaining unit, tax sheltered annuities, student-teachers, voluntary payroll deduction, athletic transfer rule, fiscal management goals, budget planning, financial records, audits, student activities fund, payroll procedures, capital assessments, and use of district cell phones. Thanks, Sue, and a second? And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jesse. And Tara Thomas is here this evening for any questions that we might have about all of those, that myriad of policies. All right, if there are no questions, then I would entertain a motion to approve. Thanks, Sue. I mean, we already did that, so let's vote. Yeah, so all those in favor of approving those, second reading of those policies, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. The next.
Excuse me, poor president. Real quick, just want to give, I know that I said this to Jane, and I believe I forwarded maybe my email to Tara, but just want to give Tara kudos on the work that she's done. You know, there was a lot of, there were some board policies that we wanted to just clean up, just in accordance with, you know, school policy and everything else. And Tara really, you know, kind of put us to task and made sure that all that got done. And, you know, just excited, obviously, I know there's committee members here as well, and know the work that Tara has done, but being new to the community, it was just good to see that kind of work ethic to get, you know, everybody on board and move the conversation forward. The hope is to get all the twenty nineteen policies done prior to the end of school year, and Tara already mentioned that in her meeting today. So, again, just kudos again in regards to this process.
Sounds like you'll be meeting again.
Yeah.
Yeah. Getting it done, so, appreciate that, Tara.
And this does complete all of them that needed to be reviewed. This was the last batch, so we are up to date.
Yeah, that's great. Awesome.
Took a little hard nose in there, Tara.
Dr. Bajway was the champion behind us.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you for pointing that out, so. All right, so we voted on that, so we're going to move on then to item J, which is on page sixty-five. And this is the, our twenty nineteen budget certification adoption. Oh, yeah, no, I'm just getting there. And the Board of Education, the recommended motion is the Board of Education certify and adopt the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget with maximum expenditures of one hundred and seventy-nine million, six hundred and six thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars, and the property tax levy rate of fourteen-point-two-zero-six-nine-four as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
All right, and discussion.
I guess I'm, I'm just pleased that, how many years in a row we've lowered the levy rate?
I think we had one glitch in there, but I think it is eight out of nine.
Eight out of nine, so, that's, that's being pretty diligent with your dollars, so I appreciate that. I think the community appreciates going down to fourteen-point-two-zero-six-nine-four.
And just remind our viewers, how many schools are in the district for the union, urban education?
How many districts are in the UEN?
Yeah, so.
There's eight of the original and ten more?
Ten more.
So, sheer numbers, yeah.
Yeah, eighteen or twenty of the total.
So, that's very impressive.
Is there anything further for Michael? All right, then seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget certification? Does this need to be a roll call, Michael?
Yes.
Okay, so, India Johnson?
India Johnson.
Aye.
Thank you. Jessie Knight?
Aye.
Sue Flynn? Rhonda McCraina?
Aye.
Lyle Schmidt?
Aye.
Shanley McNally votes aye, the motion carries.
I thought I was going to say Lyle.
Thank you all. Thank you all for knowing your names. That concludes the action items on our agenda tonight, and I will turn it over then to Dr. Lindemann for her superintendent's report.
Very quickly tonight. First, I also want to thank the negotiations team. That is, that is a lot of work. It really is a lot of work, and there was a lot of time spent, evenings, sometimes late into the evenings or later, and so, very appreciative of that. Thank you, Kingsley, really for taking a lead on that, and also Matt Beish. Interestingly enough, would you believe that today is the first day of the last quarter of school? We are now in quarter four, so I just don't know how that happens. Well, I mean, I do, day after day, but you just get to that, and it just seems like we blinked and here we are. So, for parents, that might be helpful to know, but first day of the fourth quarter, so we're going to bring it home right now. I also wanted to just thank all of the people who were involved in the Culture Fest. Maybe somebody was going to mention the Culture Fest, but it was, you know, it's, that is just a really huge deal for our school. I actually was out of district that couple of days, and so, I know my husband took the kids, and he came home and said, that is, that's a wow. I mean, it is a wow. And so, I think it was kind of standing room only for everybody who was there. It was, it was pretty wild and, but just such great student participation, such great parent participation, staff participation, it was just, it's just, and so many community volunteers. So, I just did not want to let that go without saying a word of gratitude to all the people who were planning and implementing that. And then, I just, I wanted to follow up on one thing, and then I'm going to actually yield a little bit of time to Stephanie. I've asked her to talk a little bit about ISASP testing, but, you know, when, when Matt was talking about his interns tonight, he was talking about the four people that he has. When our students in Waterloo get to their fourth year, we are really trying to build up options when they get to their senior year. And so, while it's true that a student could go through their senior year and just do a regular senior year, east, west, expo, continuing to take classes like anyone would, we also are trying to layer on some, some options for them. And so, we have a lot of students who will choose to take some classes at the Waterloo Career Center to continue to layer on. Maybe they didn't take anything before, but they go there as a senior and take it for the first time, or they've been there since a sophomore, and they continue to take levels of classes. But we are also gearing up a lot of internships and then apprenticeships. We were just approved as a, as an apprenticeship site for, we are the fifth in the state of Iowa, so we will, we will be looking at registered apprenticeships moving forward, starting in the fall. And we'll make sure that you know more about that as we go. I'm not prepared today to share too much more, other than we are moving forward with that. So, we really are trying to add options for kids in their, in their senior year, whether it's earning credits, or whether it's, you know, earning money or learning content. It's, I think that's a really great thing for our kids. So, it just made me think of that when, when Matt mentioned some of the senior kids who are moving on with him, so. That's a great thing. And with that, Dr. Mohorn, would you just like to tell, I think the board would be very interested to know a little bit about ISASP. Where are we?
So, where we are depends on the building. I do know, for example, because my daughter goes to Lincoln, that Lincoln started testing their third graders today. However, last week, the first day, Central started testing. So, Darren Han and I went because we wanted to see how it was going. So, we wanted to just peek in on different classes. They started day one with eighth grade, doing eighth grade science. So, we visited each of the eighth grade classrooms, just talked to the teachers for a few minutes, and we didn't interrupt and talk to the kids. Got comments such as, the kids were all engaged. What we could see was every kid looked to be working on their assessment. No one was talking, no one was sleeping, no one had their head down while we were in there peeking through. One of the teachers showed us how he was monitoring the students. He said, I don't have to get up and walk around and disturb them as much because I can see if they're active, and he showed me the screen. I can see if they're actively taking the test right here on my screen, and he really liked that. I didn't get the feedback because I didn't want to interrupt the kids from the students. I haven't gotten any, anything negative from the principals. The things that we're running into are logistical things that you would always run into with any new assessment, just kids being in the wrong buildings, maybe different ID numbers, but just things like that, not major things as of right now. Not all of the buildings have started testing yet. A lot of them are graduating into it. For example, at Lincoln, they're doing third grade this week, fourth grade next week, and then fifth grade the week after that. And I know other schools have, we've allowed them to structure their test schedule which works best for their building, because every building is different.
Share a little bit on that, so, thank you very much.
That's great to hear. I know, I did a presentation for Leadership Iowa on Friday up at the College of Ed at UNI, and one of the questions they talked about was the new assessment. And when I told them that our board had taken a practice, they were like, what? They thought it was the coolest thing, so I feel like we did a, I'm really glad we got to do that, because they were impressed.
Well, I think the word spread. I had two high school teachers catch me this weekend, and they said, I heard you had a hard time. and they said, I heard you had a hard time with it. I'm like, I don't think I said that.
It, it is hard, though, I actually did have the chance to talk with some students, and there are a variety of perspectives as we would expect, but there were a lot of kids who said, this, this is clearly a more challenging test. It is, you know, the story problems in math, some of them are, you know, three or four steps, so I could see where even if a child got started with the first step, carrying that through and taking that answer to the second step and then multiplying and then you have to divide it up at the, I mean, it's, it is, it is significant, it is a significant change. So, I also would remind the viewers that, you know, we're not going to get results back anytime soon, so I think it'll be, you know, it'll be a good eight to ten months before we see anything. So, right now, first, first day and, or first, first time through and so, and thank you, Dr. Mohorn, for sharing.
Yeah, thank you.
A little of the uptake, thank you.
Anything further then, Dr. Lindemann? All right. Okay, Lyle, I'm going to start with you tonight, board member comments.
Yeah, there's a couple things, you mentioned the senior year options, and this ties into the improved wages, improved starting wages in particular, I think, to attract teachers that are very targeted in some cases, and especially with the Career Center. You know, we're kind of setting our seniors up, our graduates up, to choose now between the traditional sit and learn after high school to a new earn and learn environment in which they can, they have the, you know, they, number one, they fill the skills gap that's everywhere, but number two, on a, on a personal level, they're able to basically be self-sufficient and fund their own for, education going forward, so, so they don't really need to go into debt. They can earn and learn at the same time, and I think that's probably the best model, but I think many of the things we've done, and especially with the new starting wage tonight, will allow us, because the key to all this is teachers, you know, it's, it's been said many times, is to state the obvious, good schools consist of good teachers, period. But the type of teachers that are a good fit for Waterloo is, it's not only because, you know, we have a lot of diversity and different languages and, and go through that, but it's also the curriculum itself now is becoming very diverse and different, very different skill level, and, you know, we need teachers that are very forward-thinking, buy into the whole entrepreneurship of every single career we, we have, so. So, hopefully, this will let, let us make a offer whenever we see students and, and we're not disappointed because we have a lower salary than someone else, so they, so they go elsewhere. So, I, I think it's all coming together and I, I'm pretty happy about that.
Thanks, Lyle. Rhonda?
I would like to underscore some of what Lyle mentioned. I think that's why it's important for us to support our public schools and those teachers that work within our buildings, and I think it's very important to, I think it's very important for our constituents to continue to support our public schools. I think it's, it's important for our legislators to understand that what we do, well specifically here in Waterloo, we do allow our students to, to earn and to learn, and we do that in a unique way, in a way that, that not a lot of people get an opportunity to do, so I don't want to get too political, but I do, I will say, I'm very passionate about those individuals, especially those elected individuals who support public schools, and that's all I'm going to say for tonight, because I couldn't say more, but, but I think that's important.
Thank you, you're welcome. You're welcome. Sue?
Well, I just wanted to say that as a long-term board member, I think that we, as a entity of a board and a district and staff in all areas, need to be proud of the, the quietness that we have when we have major issues. You know, like when we're doing negotiations. There aren't people here, you know, angry with us and that we're not doing the process right, and when we do a budget, they're not people saying, you're using money wrongly, and, and I just think that quietness is a sign of approval in somewhat, and I just, I just was taking notice of that, that, you know, we don't have anybody coming and complaining about just some issues that could be, and so, I just want to thank all of our staff for their hard work and their good work in, in creating a calmness and I think a level of trust in our community, and I appreciate that as a board member.
Thanks, Sue. Jesse?
I just want to say, there was a real good article today for, on diversity in the Courier. Kingsley, some of your staff, they're in there and there's people and, yeah, she was, she was there.
From Page.
Yeah, so anyway, great article, great to see you guys, you know, getting, one of the great things we have going on here out, and then some of the things you're looking at and what you look for in employees and stuff, so, thought it was a great article.
Thank you, Jesse. And India had to go, and I actually do not have a report other than to say that the next time we meet, it will be April twenty-second, so April's cooking along, and then we will meet on May thirteenth, that's our only meeting in the month of May. So, unless there's anything further to come before the board, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Sue, and a second?
Second.
And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, chair votes aye, we are adjourned. Good evening, enjoy the evening, it's beautiful out, thanks. Yes. I just have to leave out. But then I wanted to get this. All right, so tomorrow morning, Saturday.